Calling this the regular city council agenda meeting to order at 1:01 PM on this April the 15th, tax day, if you didn't remember. I'm reminding you, get it done. And with that, it is officially called to order and we're going to have Tommy Hebert lead us in our chaplain prayer and pledges today, so if you'll please stand.
Y'all bow your heads if you would. Dear God, we thank you for another day. Thank you for another day of life. We thank you that we do live in San Angelo. We'd ask that you watch over this council as we make decisions that affect our citizens' lives and give us the wisdom and the courage that we need to make the best and the right decisions. We ask that you always protect our first responders. We ask that you protect those that protect our nation that literally go down to battle at this very moment. And I pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now move into our proclamations or recognitions, as we say. So we will start with A, which is animal care and control. So those of you who are here with that, please come forward. I forgot to change this. It's okay, we managed. Oh, Tommy, sorry. Animal care and control personnel work tirelessly to protect animals and people, enforce laws, rescue animals in need, and promote responsible pet ownership. These professionals provide year-round care to impounded animals, respond to emergencies, and safeguard public health through disease prevention and enforcement. Their dedication ensures the safety and well-being of our community's animals and residents, often working in challenging and unpredictable conditions. Animal Control Appreciation Week is nationally recognized during the second full week of April, honoring the vital work of these dedicated professionals. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and encourage all residents to join in thanking the animal control professionals who serve our community. Would you like to offer some words?
I'm Morgan Chegwin, interim director of Neighborhood and Family Services. One of my divisions is Animal Services, which I'm so proud to work with these dedicated professionals. So many of them are not here to be photographed right now simply because they're out directly serving citizens and animals. So as you see them about, as you see our social media posts honoring them, please just recognize that these are the folks that show up on Easter Sunday to care for the sheltered pets. These are the folks that go up out on Thanksgiving Day when there's a critical incident with an animal. And so we just, we may disagree with things going on on social media or other, you know, bickering that may happen, but at the end of the day, the team that shows up every day to serve San Angelo and serve its families and animals is worthy of this recognition. So I'm grateful to mayor and council for that.
I'm Angela, Angela Blas, interim assistant director of Animal, Neighborhood and Family Services. And I just want to say, it stinks to accept a recognition for staff that can't be here, but the job is never done and it never ends. So I just want to thank y'all for shining a light on them because they deserve that recognition.
Let's have a picture. You know, yesterday, or was, what day was it, Daniel, when we had, was it last Friday when we did honored the police officers that helped, right? You want to talk about that for a minute?
Actually, I have, mayor, actually, we have officers here as well. But yeah, I mean, it was a promotional. We also had two officers that were recognized for outstanding service. You know, we have police officers, of course, that we consider our heroes, but we have others that really step up above and beyond, that really should be recognized as well. And I'm sure that that'll be something that we'll be doing in the future, Chief, as far as making sure that we're addressing those officers as well. But again, thank you. I know that Floyd was mentioned as well during that ceremony. And it was good to be having him back there with Animal Services, but it's wonderful to have an officer there too that was there to assist him, to ensure that he was going to be okay. It was a touch and go, but again, we're so grateful to Floyd for the service that he provides and also that he's back with the city.
Well, I see we have someone in the audience today that we are reading a proclamation about. So Charlotte, would you come forward, please, dear? Sorry, wasn't there yesterday. Charlotte Anderson has served as executive director of Keeps San Angelo Beautiful since assuming the role in 2020. During her tenure, Charlotte has achieved numerous accolades, including the designation of KSAB as a five-year Gold Star Affiliate with Keep Texas Beautiful, recognition by the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling with an Excellence in Environmental Education Award, and the Governor's Community Achievement Award for Sustainable Excellence. Most notably, Charlotte was honored as one of the Contra Valley's Remarkable Women in March 2025, further highlighting her commitment to our community. Charlotte's persistence and dedication have been instrumental in fostering strong partnerships with TechDOT, Republic Services, San Angelo ISD, and Angelo State University, which will continue to contribute to the success of Keeps San Angelo Beautiful's mission to maintain clean, green, and beautiful spaces through art, science, and education. City leadership acknowledges Charlotte's passion and dedication over the last five years and expresses our sincere appreciation for her contributions to our community. As Charlotte continues her journey, we wish her the very best in her future endeavors, endeavors, that is. And therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and applaud Keeps San Angelo Beautiful's executive director, Charlotte Anderson, and encourage everyone to thank her for her efforts while wishing her the very best.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter and city council. Just surely appreciate the opportunity to build the foundation and initiate a program that will continue to beautify and amplify the beautification in our city. Our community is just phenomenal. We have a lot of volunteers. You know, it's the best way to relieve stress, you know, and live out your passion and team build with people in your businesses. So again, to all our volunteers, we want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication in making San Angelo the most beautiful place to live, work, and play.
Public comment. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Have they done so?
Yes.
Speakers will be called in the order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating your name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. If you'll take it over, Heather?
Evelyn Smith.
It's freezing up here.
Good afternoon. My name is Evelyn Smith, SMD five. I'm here about the tiers funding. And I'm going to try to say this as nice as I can. I'm not angry, but I'm a little disappointed with that. So I'll just start out by reading what I have written down here. It said, "On January 7, 2025, city council meeting, at the city council meeting, the mayor stated," and I quote, "We cannot muddy the waters to justify an action that someone wants to take." That seemed to refer to guess sending me church and myself, since we were the only applicants. We were justified to put in the application, so that's the action that we took. I'd like the record to reflect that the waters was already muddy when the nonprofit church was eligible to put in the application, but never was going to be approved. This all started back in 2022, August 2nd, when I came to the meeting and asked were tiers funds available for nonprofit organizations? And the mayor clearly stated to me that nonprofits do not pay taxes, therefore, they were not eligible. But on August 18th, 2022, the city council meeting, it was approved by the city council to combine the North and South into one policy. It was stated that the nonprofit in the South were not eligible for tiers incentive with the exception of governmental entities, but it was approved that the North side nonprofit could apply at any time. So we're not trying to build up a church just to have church, as the mayor stated on January 7th. But our goal is to beautify the blighted area and to invite the public in those areas to help the current business and to attract new businesses in that area. And we know, and the council know, what the control of regulation states. The city council knew that the nonprofit church did not pay taxes when they authorized us to put in the application. On January 7, 2025, at the meeting, the mayor also stated that she was talking to a gentleman who had a tiers program, and he said, I quote, "You mean a nonprofit who brings nothing to the table, wants to take advantage of the program?" And I say, "Yes, because it was voted by the city council who opened the door for nonprofits to apply." So the city council set, the city councils sets and can, they're the ones who set, who can apply. And this was stated by Rick Wise, the assistant city manager, on January 7th, that they're the ones who set, who can apply. The question is not what the nonprofit did wrong, because we just put in the application. We do, we did things decent and in order. So the question is, why is the application open to nonprofits in the first place? So please don't point the finger at the nonprofit. We didn't, we did not create this confusion, and we just wanted to do what was necessary.
Thank you very much.
So I want to thank the tiers board and the city council. Even though we've had our differences, I appreciate everything that you guys do. You have a hard job to do. So those who are staying and those who are going, I wish you the best, let God do the rest.
Thank you, dear. Is that the end of public comment?
That concludes public comment, and we have one staff member to make an announcement.
Okay.
John Bellini.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, I didn't realize that I was up already.
So soon.
My name is John Bellini. I'm the sergeant over Public Safety Communications, and thank y'all for having me up here to speak today. I need to apologize. I kind of dropped the ball this year, and I failed to get the proclamation set up for my dispatchers for Telecommunicators Week. This week, second week of April every single year, is National Telecommunicators Week. These people are the convoys on the other side of the phone or the radio. Countless citizens and first responders owe their lives to these people, and just wanted to make sure that something was said about the work that they do today.
Well, I think we could, at the next city council meeting, do a proclamation. It might not be timed exactly correctly with when you normally do it, but we would love to be able to honor those individuals. So I would ask that we go ahead and get a proclamation together and have available at the next city council meeting to read.
Yes, ma'am.
How's that?
We can do that. Thank y'all so much.
Sergeant, you actually didn't miss out, because they're getting double recognition today and next morning, too. So good job, man.
There you go. Well, thank y'all.
Thank you. We are now moving into the consent agenda portion of our meeting. I will ask each council member if there's an item that they want to have pulled from the consent agenda. And I'll start with Larry.
No, ma'am.
Okay, Karen.
No, ma'am.
Lucy.
No, ma'am.
Harry.
No, ma'am.
Tommy.
No, ma'am.
With nothing being pulled from the consent agenda, then we will take a vote. All those in favor? Oh, wait, I have to have public comment now, sorry. Public comment on anything on the consent agenda.
Jamal Schumpert.
Good morning, Jamal Schumpert. 2817 North Urban Street. On the consent agenda particularly, I think that the item E about the community safety plan is great information. I think you should send that to our schools, all of our schools, so that they can publicize it to the parents. It shows where kids get hit, car crashes happen, the most likely places that they happen.
What item is this?
I think it's consent.
I know it's on consent, but which item is it?
Consent item G, I believe, is what he's referring to.
Is it G?
Yeah, I think it's G. I'm not sure.
The Comprehensive Safety Action Plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's item G. So it's Consider Resolution to Adopt the City of San Angelo's Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which we just voted to do. Or we, well, it's a motion and a second to adopt it.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's a great, great thing that y'all should actually send it out to the schools so that parents would know about where to keep their kids away from with the intersections and getting hit on bikes. Another thing is with Freeze and Nichols, are they actually going to be doing the job this time, or are they going to contract part of the job out? I didn't see in the documents if they were going to contract it out.
That's item B.
And that is an item that you would need to speak to Shane Kelton about. This is for public comment, not back and forth.
Yeah, well, that's part of the public comment. She's going back with me, so I guess we can go back. But in the future, I would like a lot more details about what Freeze and Nichols' part is, because on the previous item, it listed all their parts and what they were going to do with it. And I noticed that they contracted out certain parts of it. And as far as, I guess, with the rest of my time, I did have public comment, but I guess I did something wrong. I did want to say bye to all of you guys, and thank you.
We're not through yet.
No, you're not. But just in case I don't meet you guys again, Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Miller, Ms. Gunter, y'all done a wonderful job. Regardless of my criticisms, y'all have pushed San Angelo forward, and some of the things you've done, I hope to take advantage of in the future. I just really wanted to say bye to you guys, because y'all really have influence to me to get more into government, a lot more. And it may seem like we're rivals, but I don't see you that way.
You're here to ask questions, here to clarify, and we appreciate that.
Yes, and I thank you for taking my questions. Thank you again, Ms. Gunter, Ms. Gonzalez, Mr. Miller. And Mr. Miller, we will miss you in ADA community. You are like the expert on that, so please stick around and guide us, us younger folks on that, because we will need that in our future. All right, thank you.
I'll be there.
Thank you. All right, thank y'all, council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second. We've had public comment. Now we'll take a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes 6-0. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. To participate, please sign in with a city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with item A, First Reading and Public Hearing of An Ordinance Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2024, and Ending September 30, 2025 for COSA DC Land Purchase. And you're on, Tina.
Thank you, mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. I don't have a slide, because this is just one amendment to the budget ordinance. It is in the amount of $1.4 million, and the purpose is for the COSA, the development corporation, COSA DC, to be able to purchase land from the city. It's about 251.8 acres of land, and I think Michael Dane will be here to answer any project-related questions, if you have those.
Any questions for Michael Dane?
That's it.
No questions from Michael Dane? So I'll think up one real quick.
Move approval, as presented.
How about the person with the animal costume on with the?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, with that.
We've been here too long, mayor.
There's a motion to approve item A. May I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any public comment, Heather?
No.
Then let's take a vote. All those in favor of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Item B, First Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinances for 1Z24-16, A Request to Rezone from the General Heavy Commercial Zoning District to the Heavy Commercial Zoning District at 2830 North Chadburn, and to the General Commercial Zoning District, 2802 and 2810 North Chadburn.
Thank you, mayor.
Do I need to read the second part now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read CP 24-06, A Request to Amend the Comprehensive Plan from Neighborhood Center to Commercial at 2802, 2810, and 2830 North Chadburn.
Thank you, mayor. Erin Benoy, Planning and Development Services Director. This is a rezoning case that's come to us due to a tiers project here on this property. This is one of those areas that we have the split zoning of CGCH, and under the tiers policies, we, the tiers program pays for it to be rezoned, to choose one of those. In this case, we're choosing the heavy commercial due to an existing business back here, and it is compatible with some of the vacant businesses here. So this is in the Reagan neighborhood, District 4, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez. The vision plan currently is Neighborhood Center, and you can see the three property sizes there, and it's Request to Rezone and Amend the Comprehensive Plan. So here on the left is the rezoning. You can see that it's CGCH. We are moving these properties right here to CH. These properties will actually stay CG. We're not touching those properties. So there is a bit of a buffer there. People could come get a conditional use for residential if they wanted to, or if they chose to buy those up and operate a general commercial business. This is 29th Street and Chadburn, so a fairly major intersection for our community. On the right side is our vision plan. You can see it's all Neighborhood Center, but just below that is commercial. So we're bringing that commercial up to encompass that corner. While the other uses will still continue to be lighter uses, it does seem appropriate to bring up the commercial to allow the heavy commercial in that area.
Heavy commercial allows for what?
Heavy commercial, so this is an automotive business that's back here where you drop your vehicle off. They do bodywork, they also do repair work, and so it's designed that if you take your vehicles there and drop them off, you may not pick them up for a few days. And so they allow that type of usage. This is a vacant property, and this property here has been a, for lack of better terms, a club or bar in the past. They are looking at coming back, and under the heavy commercial, based on the size and volume, they would also fit in that area. The tiers program did some facade grants, helping them with roofing and some of the facade treatments to help them get up and running again. But it will allow a heavier use of like a more intense use of heavy commercial. It does allow for some unlimited outdoor storage. As opposed to general commercial, it is limited, and that's usually because of automotive businesses, that vehicles may sit outside longer than other places. Again, these three properties will stay the general commercial with a buffer back here. This property and this property, they've been existing for many, many years, since the 50s. We did send out our notices. We did not have any complaints at this time or any issues, and so we still feel pretty strongly moving forward. We do have the staff recommendation to change the zoning from the CGCH to the heavy commercial and the comprehensive plan from Neighborhood Center to commercial. And Planning Commission did recommend approval 7-0 at their March meeting this year.
Lucy, would you like to comment?
Sure, thank you. Y'all already answered the questions I had, which one of them was the, what kind of commercial was going to be, heavy commercial was going in there? And the other one was about the opposition, if you had gotten any. And other than that, I will approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Harry. Public comment, any, none?
Jamal Schumpert.
Jamal Schumpert, SMD four. I spoke to the woman who stays right next door to this, those three properties that are vacant. She said that, and she spoke at the Planning Commission, she doesn't really want heavy industries over there. And I kind of agree with her. It's kind of deterred investment in the MLK and Chadburn corridor to have those light manufacturing and heavy industries in that area. In fact, I've proposed to move those areas to the Bryant and move it on out, so you could be a Bryant on further out and put commercial retail in the MLK and the Chadburn areas. And I know that this building's been there for 50 years, but this woman has been in her home about 20 years, and it looks real nice. And if she ever wanted to sell it, would it be in a club right next door? She didn't know that a club was going in next door, or a bar. And heavy commercial? I don't think any family's going to buy a home right there, starting off to raise a family. But that's a consistent problem going up and down the MLK and Chadburn corridor. You have light manufacturing here, you got regular general commercial here, or you got CGCH, you can do either or both. If we would clean it up with the comprehensive plan update, I think you wouldn't have to incentivize people to come to those neighborhoods, because it's a heavy community, and a lot of people spurred from Main Street all the way on to Lily Street. It's a lot of people. You just need food restaurants, and maybe a grocery store and other like shopping plazas on the MLK and Chadburn corridor. It also decreased a lot of the traffic going east all the way to west, because they don't have any of those same shops. So yeah, I would be in favor of, I mean, approving this, but see if we can't get a conditional use, so that if he sells that business, it's gone. But I'm not, I didn't know anything about the bar that's coming in with it. And Shani, who was the woman who spoke at the Planning Commission and who was against this, she didn't know anything about a bar. We were only told that it was going to be the same shop that it's been. And I watched it during the tiers meeting. It does need to be revitalized, but heavy industry, are we going to move that way in that type of neighborhood? Because it will deter investment. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there a bar going in next to the residence right there?
So this facility here has been a bar or dance club in the past. From indications through the tier application, that is what they intend it to be in the future. They're still working through some permitting items on that. These structures here, that one's vacant, and this one is a, an office right now. So that structure is over here on this corner. I think, I think her property is here, but I could be wrong on that unless it's right here.
That's what I think you were talking about was that one, that, not that one, the other one.
The other one?
That one.
And this is the automotive business that's at the back of the property. That's a pretty substantial.
And it doesn't currently exist as a business?
It does. It has been operating for over four years now. There is an alleyway that separates them. It's hard to see in here, but it's, I think it's a 15-foot alleyway that's there that separates them. They are built right on to the property line, a solid wall. There's no openings that open out on that alleyway. And so that's one of our challenges, is how do we continue to have this redevelopment? 29th is a major thoroughfare, so is Chadburn, and we're trying to, how do we diversify that area just a little bit more and continue to get the uses to match?
Yeah, if I lived in that house, I might have a problem. Yeah, if I lived in that house, I might have a problem with this.
Yeah.
I don't know. I didn't realize she'd- and she'd never put in a letter opposing this or anything?
No, there was a person that came in to the Planning Commission. We- we thought it was this- this one here, and as we talked to her afterwards, it was, well, they already have CH capability, and this isn't really changing that. Now, we could downgrade it to general commercial. That would basically make this one maybe a legal, a non-conforming legal status, that if they were to go away, then they would have to come back for maybe a conditional use to come back, or a potential rezoning in the future. The comprehensive plan to allow this general commercial would still need to go to the commercial comprehensive plan. Neighborhood commercial can go under the neighborhood center comprehensive plan, which is this pink area that you see on the right side. But then that- that lowers the intensity or the volume of commercial businesses. How many people can go, and is it a small square foot or a small footprint? And so if you look at a structure that that's size, that's a pretty big footprint, and they're a pretty big footprint. We know both of them are over 5,000 square feet. And so those are- if their occupancy is over 100 people, that's a pretty high volume of people.
And they're empty now.
One is empty now. The one at the back is occupied.
So is her house in the back of this?
I think that's...
Is that what you said?
I think what Mr. Schumpert is saying is that it's this property here. I was under the impression through talking with staff that it was this property over here, but I would- I would say if Mr. Schumpert did go to- go out on site, and he believes it's that one, then it's probably that property there.
Well, that issue's a question. Yeah, that's making me think this differently, just for the mere fact that I'm thinking of this lady, that I- I would be the same. I wouldn't want a club right in front of my house or behind my house.
I- I do believe, I mean, I know we had a motion and maybe a second, but there- there's maybe a possibility to amend the motion, to change it from the CH zoning to the CG zoning, if that's more palatable, because that is lowering the zoning. It's not intensifying the zoning. It's still within the CGCH, and so it would just go to a general commercial. It would still allow that business to function until they changed, until they became vacant or after a year that they are no longer using that building in that way.
Okay. I- I would rather do that. I would rather go to general. You wanna amend the motion? amend the motion.
Are they able to amend the motion to go to a general commercial lower than a heavy commercial?
Yeah, you can go to a less intense use, but I guess I would just be concerned about the- the property owner that we're talking about, and if, I mean, they've been thinking that Planning Commission approved it, and are- are they willing to go forward, I guess, if they, I mean, would they instead want to keep their current general commercial, heavy commercial, and just not accept the tiers funding rather than be rezoned to general commercial?
I wonder if it should go back to the Planning Department, because the reality is, is we weren't talking the same language, it seems like, in terms of, so if we're not clear about even the woman who was against it, I think it needs to go back for reconsideration.
So let me ask this question, Mayor.
Yes, Eric.
The individual that Jamal talked about, he said was just adjacent to this property. She never came to the Planning Commission?
She did come to the Planning Commission and ask questions, and we talked with her after the Planning Commission, yes.
She gave you her address. Your staff thought it was down somewheres else. I'm- I'm a little confused, concerned a little bit. If she doesn't live at that particular, adjacent to that property, then we're having a conversation that may be or may not be appropriate.
That's what I'm saying. We need to go back to the Planning Commission, let them reconsider it.
If I may, based on Mr. Schumpert's comments, he referenced Ms. Shandee. Is that correct? That was the name that I heard him say?
Not sure we understood.
That was the name I heard him to say. And when we looked it up, she is at 1228th, not 729th. So unfortunately, he's not here to clarify, but that- that was the name I heard him say. And if so, she...
Well, even with that, there's too much every confusion. So with confusion, let's start all over on this.
Yeah, I would- I would prefer we do that, because what I'm finding problems is that on Chadburn, there are people that are right next door to these businesses. I mean, like, right next door. Their house is right there practically across, I mean, step into the pavement or the parking lot of a- of a business, and they are having a lot of hard times trying to keep that neighborhood safe. And they- and the- these are houses that have been there for 50, 60 years, but the businesses, it- it's, I'm gonna go ahead and say it, it's that Cody's Auto place that has now the game room, and that there's a lot of complaints coming from that neighborhood because they can't do anything about it. They can't- they can't say we want them to leave or whatever. They can't. So for that reason, I don't want to start something else on across the street that is gonna bring in more problems to the people that are on that side of town, that are gonna be saying, hey, this place is the bar and all these people, and they're hanging outside, and they're doing this, and they're doing that, and it attracts homeless people in the middle of the night, and they're just hanging around town on Chadburn. So I'd rather find out a little bit more about it and see if that lady, or even if I can get her address, I'd go by there and talk to her. But can we just table this?
I think that's what we're saying that we want to do. We want to table it and bring it back at the next meet. Well, do you need to go back to the Planning Commission, then come back to us?
Let's- go ahead, Brandon.
I was gonna say, no, I- I think you could table it, because if, either way, if we go forward with the recommendation, we're good there, or if we do the less intensive use, and the owner is agreeable to that, then I think you're still good to hear it here at the next meeting. So just if you'll table it.
But if the Planning Commission voted on it thinking one thing versus another, then that's not right either.
Well, but the City Council can make those decisions.
I know we can, but we- we need to be clear on whose property...
It was very clear at the Planning Commission that this was the property owner that came forward. I- I'm not sure if that's who Mr. Schumpert was referring to or not.
I know, this is the reason I'm saying. We're not all on the same page. We need to clarify all these details before we move forward.
We'll clarify those and bring it back to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this item? And...
I mean, I would say we just bring it back. I mean, yeah.
Okay. You wanna move on to item two, or is that one and two?
That was item B, one and two.
Okay, so we'll move on to item C. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z25-02, a request to rezone from the light manufacturing zoning district to the general commercial zoning district at the properties located at 999-1131-115112, 011309-13551407-1459 and 1500 Nickerbocker, and from the light manufacturing zoning district to high-rise multifamily residential zoning district for the properties located at 1426 and 1428 Western Court.
Thank you, Mayor. Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is in the neighborhood of ASU in College Hills, District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith. It is a very large area of just under 24 acres, and this is a city-initiated rezoning. This is, this also kind of connects to some of the billboard discussion. So as you can see, all of this is going from light manufacturing. So here at Austin Avenue and the railroad all the way to this point is light manufacturing on the, what I'm gonna call is the northwest side of the railroad. It has never developed that way. It's developed in a general commercial way and a residential way. You can see the residential, the multifamily residential in that area. There is one vacant piece of land right there. It's not under this zoning. It got rezoned as general commercial a few years ago, when the place side next to them, which is now Starbucks, was a chicken- chicken shack. So we have done a lot of good work of going and talking individually with these property owners and business owners, and they are in support of this change. What has driven it is there's been, this property on the point has come forward with a conditional use three times in the last 12 months. Each time, they get approved for it, but the business doesn't work out, and so they have to keep redoing it. Most of these other businesses actually have conditional uses that they went through so they could operate in those areas. What we're proposing is let's go back to general commercials to allow them, and so if they ever choose to redevelop in the, in 20, 30 years, they'll have the right zoning to do that. The area is visioned over here on the right side to be commercial. And I want to just take a moment on this slide. You can, again, you can see the railroad kind of comes through there. We are not doing anything on the south, I guess that may be southeast side of the railroad. Those zonings are all staying the same. We're not touching those. We're only doing that area up there in red. We did mail out 27 notices, did not receive any oppositions or in support. Staff does recommend changing the areas that were described to general commercial and to RM2 high-rise multifamily, because they are three-story structures. Planning Commission heard the case on March 24th and do- does recommend approval with a seven, zero vote.
Karen, any comment?
Motion to approve.
Public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Item D, first reading and public hearing of ordinances for 1Z25-03, a request to rezone from the general heavy commercial zoning district to the low-rise multifamily residential zoning district for properties at 217 and 221 East Avenue K, and 2CP2501, a request to amend the comprehensive plan from industrial to commercial for properties at 217 and 221 East Avenue K.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is in the Fort Concho neighborhood, District 3, Mr. Harry Thomas. Just under two acres at 1.8 acres, and it is rezoned from a dual general heavy commercial to low-rise multifamily being RM1, and the comprehensive plan being from industrial to commercial. So you can see the properties here between Dugan, Metcalf, and Avenue K. There is no longer a structure there. That has been demoed, and so it's been Blake Land. When this Dollar General came in back in 2017 or 2018, they had bought all the property. Now they're selling it off to add, a local developer's looking at adding some low-rise multifamily housing. As many of y'all know, this, what is described on this map is Avenue K going here. That's actually to Lone Wolf Bridge, which goes over to some park area and the South Concho River is right there. This is an area that's really ripe for redevelopment, and we think this is a good infill project for this area to bring in some low-rise multifamily. So again, you can see CGCH over here. There's quite a few vacant lots in the area. There are some folks that are looking at those lots, trying to decide, can they convert them to residential? Do they bring in some mall, some small businesses? Oak Street is right over here, and so it is connected to some of our corridors with Avenue L going out to the base and areas through there. You can see on the right side, this area shows to be industrial, but that's really mainly because of our water treatment plant facility over there. But over time, this area has not really developed industrial. There's a lot of residential homes in the area. There are a lot of amenities in this kind of half-mile radius over here at Avenue L, Oaks, Chadburn area with parks and other things that are very conducive for residential. And we think this is an area that, while it says industrial, we think it is very compatible with some residential that's low-rise multifamily. Now, my recommendation is gone, but our recommendation is to rezone this area from the CGCH to the RM1 zoning, and to do the comprehensive plan from industrial to, what did we say, commercial? Yes, to commercial, which would allow the low-rise multifamily on these properties.
Harry?
Move to approve.
Second by Tommy. Any public comment? May we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Moving to item E, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z25-07, a request to rezone from the single-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district for the property located at 2621 South Bryant.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a single property rezoning, but it's within an area that has been, had some rezonings, and you've seen some in the recent past, changing this corridor that goes along South Bryant, that they're wanting to do some light commercial. This is in Rio Vista neighborhood, District 3, Mr. Harry Thomas. The vision plan is neighborhood center. You can see it's a smaller lot at .145 acres, and it's request to rezone from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial. So you can see, this really tells a little bit more of the story. On the right side is the vision plan. Well, the corridor over time will begin to change into a light neighborhood commercial, which is smaller sizes, smaller intensity, smaller traffic, smaller footprints. And that's exactly what this person is looking at doing, is having something small over there, similar to what's across the street, that has access off of Avenue W, comes in, does some- some small things there, small offices, to continue to utilize their property. You can see to the north has been rezoned, neighborhood commercial, as well as to the south and across the street. With that, staff does recommend approval of the zone change from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial at the property. It did go to Planning Commission, and they approved on their March 24th with a vote of seven to zero.
Harry?
Well, a lot of this area, right along South Bryant, is- is going to commercial, so I move to approve.
Second by Tommy. Public comment? Any comment from council? We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. We will move into item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z25-09, a request to rezone from the single-family residential zoning district and the general commercial zoning district to the low-rise multifamily residential zoning district for the lot located on Lot 2 and Section 3 of Block 3 in Arden Acres subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is the first step in a re- in a development process for this area. This area has been speculated over the years of whether it be multifamily or single-family. They are now starting to move forward where they have up here a conditional use for household living, and now they're wanting to rezone this area from single-family residential to the RM1. And again, RM1 allows some single-family structures, duplexes, townhomes, twinhomes, and it allows low-rise multifamily. So it is kind of a multiple flexible zoning. But this area is in the Bluffs neighborhood, District 6, Mr. Larry Miller. The vision plan is neighborhood and commercial, and it's roughly 40 acres in that area, and it's a request to rezone from single-family to, and general commercial to, to RM1. So you can see here at the very front, these are general commercial areas that fronted northwest, this little street that comes through there that connects Arden and the freeway. Then at the back is single-family. It has not started to develop that way, and as developers that are looking at this or looking at costs, they're trying to figure out how can they do some single-family but still do some low-rise multifamily, kind of make a master-planned area in that, in that zone. You can see on the right side, the vision plan, again, has commercial and neighborhood. They are wanting to basically kind of extend out some of that low-rise multifamily, which although it's not on this image, there's a new facility there, and that facility is also multifamily structures there. One concern from Planning Commission is circulation. Obviously, you either go back to Arden or get here on the freeway, and there's only a couple of entrances off of the freeway. We know that we talked about that, and we're gonna be addressing that as they come forward with their plating to see what it is that they want to do, how they want to break this up, and if- if there's a way to get another connection back to Arden to circulate some traffic back there to a controlled intersection. Again, this is the first step in a multi-step process for them. This did go to Planning Commission, and staff does recommend the zone change from single-family residential and general commercial to low-rise multifamily residential, which is RM1 at that location, and Planning Commission did approve seven, zero to move in that direction as well.
So this is the first step in terms of multiple steps?
Yes, ma'am.
But that is perfect for residential development?
Yes, ma'am.
Given that is. It's just working out the details, but that empty land needs to be developed.
Yes, ma'am.
Larry?
Move to approve.
Second by Harry. Public comment?
Question, Mayor.
Oh, somebody?
Yes.
You. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, you.
Me.
Have Fire Marshal, Fire Chief weighed in on your circulation, and I would guess my question would be your ingress egress for this, for the area there as it develops with respect to getting the necessary equipment and apparatus in there?
Yes, they're certainly part of the discussions that are ongoing, and as development plan- And as development plans come forward, whether that's a plat or a site plan, and we start narrowing down how many units are involved, they're going to certainly have some requirements or recommendations. So we're keeping them very close. One of the challenges is, of course, is the Red Royal comes here. We only have one bridge that goes across there. And so it really limits things coming back to Houston Hart. So really, the only logical way is to get another access out to Arden Road, which we believe that will happen. It's just how are they going to work their buildings around that? How do we make those connections? But yes, fire prevention is heavily involved in the development process, and they will have their say on that.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
Aaron, what did you say, how many steps were involved?
I think 472. No, just kidding.
Did you see my face?
Wait a minute, we've got millions of comedians out of work.
That's why I'm in city government. What time is it? No, that's a great question, Ms. Gonzalez. And so the first step is zoning. If they get the right zoning, then they can move into other things that they'll be doing at the same time is their drainage study, their infrastructure study. How do you get water sewer into those areas? How do you break the lots up? Or do you keep it as one large lot? And then what does your site plan look like? And all of those can be reviewed concurrently. It's just a matter of how fast the company wants to move forward.
But they got to get the zoning correct first.
But they got to get the zoning correct first. Otherwise, it's not worth buying the property.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions, comments? Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We will now move into first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for ZZ5-10, a request to rezone from the single-family residential zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district to allow park and recreational uses located at Kirby Park, located at 1401, 1402, and 1403 Edmund Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron Vanoy, Planning and Development Services Director. We do have these three properties here that encompass Kirby Park. This comes forward because of the multi-use that they do there as well as the new splash pad that'll be coming in this area here. One of the things that we found out that this is zoned, single-family residential. And as we learned this morning in our sign ordinance, you can only have certain-sized signs in single-family residential. And it makes sense for this to have the same-sized sign as the one on the south side. And so moving this to neighborhood commercial is the most logical step, which will also allow the other multi-use items in the area and things like that. So this is SMD number 2, Mr. Tom Thompson in the Angelo Heights neighborhood. You can see that the future land use is open space, which is what most of our parks are under. And then over here on the right is the current zoning with single-family residential. We're simply taking that single-family residential away and moving it to neighborhood commercial, which would allow all the uses that our Parks and Recreation Department would utilize that land for. This did go to Planning Commission, and staff does recommend approval of the rezoning from RS1 to the neighborhood commercial at the 1401, 1402, and 1403 Edmund Boulevard. And Planning Commission recommends 7-0 at their March 24th meeting.
Okay, I'll speak for Tom. I make a motion for approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can you return to the, thank you, that screen? Is the 200-foot notification zone, does it impact any of those RS1 residents?
We did notify out in that area, and it did notify these residents in this area. It does not impact them right here on Nuntz's very much because it's not, I don't think that's an actual connection through there. The church did actually come back in support of this, but we did not have any opposition to this moving to neighborhood commercial.
And there was never any intent to preserve it as open space?
Well, our vision plan does preserve it as open space. Our zoning ordinance does not have park zoning. It only has land-use zoning that doesn't impact parks. And for the uses that the parks are doing, they really meet a neighborhood commercial zoning. Now, I think when we do our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance, we should bring in park zoning and zone our parks a certain way. And then they don't have to come to us for other things. This is just one of those anomalies that they came to us, "Hey, we've got a new splash pad. The sign ordinance says this. If you're zoned this, all right?" The most logical step, instead of doing a sign variance, is let's rezone it appropriately so all those activities can take place legally and there's no questions to be had in the future.
Further questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. And public comment we had? Nope. Take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. H, first reading and public hearing of ordinances for SMD number 6, A, annexation of 9.712 acres out of a Wilkie survey, S-002, abstract A-8211 in the Prestonwood addition; B, annexation of 7.477 acres out of Wilkie survey, S-002, abstract A-8211 in the Prestonwood addition; C, ZZ5-1-11, a request to rezone from the ranch and estate zoning district to the single-family residential zoning district from Pinion Ridge; and D is ZZ25-12, a request to rezone from the ranch and estate zoning district to the single-member residential zoning district on Trippington Way. You are on, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have four items here. There's one in the north here and one in the south. This is Trippington Way that comes out right there that will be an extension, and Pinion Ridge, that's an extension right there. So this top area is encompassing a drainage area right in there and coming back with some, isn't that a beautiful drawing? And some areas right there with also a detention area. And so we're doing both the annexation, which you heard the petition on earlier in March, now is the annexation as well as the rezoning so that they coincide together. This will be in SMD number 6, Mr. Larry Miller, and in the Bonham neighborhood. And the total acreage of those two small areas coming in is 17.139 acres. So here's that preliminary plat that you can see the entire area, that that's their plan over time, where they've got Pinion Ridge coming across Trippington Way. Then they have a north-south road that will come through there in a future phase. So this here is the Pinion Ridge extension area. This one is a little crooked, but this is Trippington Way that will continue through this way where the Boulevard apartments are over here right now. This is an extension of Trippington Way. Each of these are coming forward with a final plat to Planning Commission this month for single-family housing. Again, the comprehensive plan does go out in the ETJ. This is designed to be neighborhood. And so this does match what the developers wanted to do and what we're wanting to come in. We say that it kind of comes in as ranch and estate. It kind of comes in as unzoned, and that's kind of what we attach to it. And they are certainly wanting single-family zoning, which is a different lot size. So that's why we are rezoning to the single-family residential for those areas. So we do recommend the adoption of the annexation ordinance for the 9.7 acres of land located west of Pendleton Parkway and south of Wilkie Dry, creating an extension of Trippington Way. And 2, the 7.12 acres of land west of Pendleton Parkway, creating an extension of a minor collector, Pinion Ridge Drive. These are old slides. We had that all changed. In that area, for those two, for the annexation. And then we also recommend the rezoning from the non-zoning of the ranch and estate zoning to single-family residential for both of those areas for a total of the 17.139 acres along Pinion Ridge and Trippington Way. The annexation did not go to Planning Commission because they do not have to hear it. They did hear the rezoning, and they did recommend March 24th, 7-0, to approve the rezoning. Any questions?
Larry, any questions?
Would you like to talk about the potential for a park?
I think there's potential over time for a park. Obviously, we've got some detention area up here, and I think that's a discussion that our operations department is continuing to have with the development community of how does some of those areas, over time, turn into some park area? They do have a big preliminary plat that there may be some areas that we look at over time in cooperation with them, maybe over in these areas of that, if the city is interested in getting parks at some point, that that's a neighborhood park in that area. Through the process that they're doing today, we do not have the ability to say you must do parks today, but we're just certainly having those conversations, so it's on everyone's mind.
I understand, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a motion for approval. Second?
Second.
Second by Tom. None, okay. So with, I should say, second by Tommy. Then there's no public comment. And so we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes 6-0. The last item on the regular agenda is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for ROW25-01, a request to abandon the alley in Miles addition, Block 41, between 4th and 5th Street, Isopacan Street.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an abandonment of the right-of-way, which is an alleyway. We did that on this property over here probably about a year ago. This property owner is interested in abandoning this alleyway that has never been developed along the railroad. We did talk with our operations department, and it is not a critical alleyway for us. And we did talk to our third-party utilities, and they do not have any utilities in that alleyway that are significant at this time. So this is in District 3, Harry Thomas. The neighborhood is downtown. It is light manufacturing, and the vision is to be downtown. And this is a request of the abandonment. So again, here's that abandonment in the description. About 20-foot wide, 1.28 acres, that if they abandon it, they will replat that into their property.
Is that owned by one single person?
Yes, ma'am, it currently is. So that's what makes this an ideal scenario coming forward because if you had multiple property owners, it can get a little challenging at that time. We try to make sure it's consistent all the way through. This abandonment does not appear that it would affect any traffic patterns, environment, or the surrounding owners, and would help maybe development, particularly of this unused space right in here if you're connecting it there and whether they have an entrance off of Pecan Street or 4th Street. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed abandonment subject to the three standard conditions of approval, that they would pay, the payment shall be remitted for all the abandonment alley right-of-way, submit and obtain approval of a subdivision plat, and then approval of the associate plat and payment request issuance and recordation of a quitclaim deed, basically allowing the property to transfer to them.
Is the property owner indicating what they want to do with the property?
They have not at this time. I know it's vacant.
But they've never done anything with their existing property?
If there's been buildings there, it's been a very long time ago.
And so they pay to get this, right? So they're going to pay the city-
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
For the abandonment?
That is correct.
And how, what's the basis for that cost?
I know there's a formula. I don't know what that formula is per square foot, but-
Yeah, it is a square-footage basis. It's, I don't know the formula off the top of my head, but it's been in effect for a while, so.
All right, Harry, any comments, questions?
Well, over last Thursday, I took a look at this area. I move to approve.
Second by Tommy. Public comment? Any questions from counsel? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. We do not have a closed session today, so we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues. So we'll go to item B. Consider approving various board nominations. Public Housing Authority Barbara Brown to a third term and Jamie Colvin to a fourth term, both ending April 2027. May I have a motion for approval? Second by Lucy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Any announcements or consideration for future agenda items? May I have a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? We are officially adjourned. Exactly 2:05.